According. So, um, I'll start talking, we're gonna start actually solving anything till 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 six ten, but. Um, let's start with, um, I'll just show you some of the questions that I'm planning on going through and if anybody has any, you know. Maybe feels like they're good questions, or if maybe, you know, I'll get some some input from you. If you think it's a waste of time, I don't really know, like, I was kind of struggling to put questions together for this. Cause I'm in like an interesting situation where I have not done very much of the practice, but I I feel like I understand everything. Hopefully, so we'll we'll put that to the test here, for sure. Everything that was sent to me, I I I am confident that I can solve, so I think, uh, we'll start with this. We'll start with this question, um, so asynchronous counter starts with that state, what will the state, so okay, so that's the. Can I can I crop this, that's the solution, but let me just show, I want to show you how we get to the solution for what's the sequence of the of the bits after? Um, after four clocks, uh, you know, what what does it have at the end there, so of course, you know, the solution's there, but. The answer's there, but not the solution, so we will talk about that, is there a way to crop this now? There's no way to crop this from here, that's fine. So we'll start with that question, and then I have some questions about, you know, turning a timing diagram into a state assigned table. I have some questions about, uh, turning a circuit into a state diagram, this one's turn a circuit into a state diagram. Um, and then I have some V H D L questions which were sent to me, very appreciated, yeah, appreciate that a lot. Um, so we'll do a couple of those, maybe just like, okay, what, look at this V H D L code, what does it do approximately, right? Uh, which is probably what the what we're gonna have on the exam, uh, something similar to that effect. Um, and yeah, oh, and one more thing to mention before I start, I I, uh, I'm sick, so I was, I got I got sick on Friday, not covid. Although we had to get covid tested, because it was it was similar to covid, um, but so if I cough a little bit, or if I, um, well, if I cough, that's all that, that's actually the only thing I have still is is to cough, so. Um, I may have to mute for a second and cough, I that's that's the only thing, uh, but hopefully it doesn't offend anybody, um, I will drink some water to good health. Yeah, where did I get these questions, um, people sent it, just random questions people sent, I have no idea. Thank you very much for the good wishes for my health, yes, it's being recorded, it is being recorded. Um, let's check if I'm recording, yes, I am recording, so, uh, you know, I'm notoriously bad at. Oh, I'm sorry, Hashem, I'm sorry, I offended you that that I'm sick. Um, okay, so it is extensive, let's get going on this, I just want to make sure that in the recording, you guys are there, yes, okay, so if anyone talks. Feel free to unmute at any moment, if you want to talk to me about anything, well, obviously related to this stuff, um, but if you have any questions, feel free to unmute and we can talk about it, so. Uh, let's begin here, and again, you know, yeah, you can you can ask questions in the chat, you can ask questions on on here, it's truly up to you, okay, so. Clear my throat a little bit before you start, so, um, we have a synchronous counter that starts with state zero, zero, zero. And the question is, what will the state be after four clock pulses, so what will the state of the circuit be? So, uh, I'm gonna take a little screenshot, because I want to make it a little bit bigger, so I'm gonna take just a screenshot of this part here. And and extend it a little bit, just so we can really see what's going on here, so first of all, all the elements of what's, we we have to understand what's what's everything happening here, so. We have three D flip flops, right, these are each D flip flops, um, the. D flip flop takes in some data, that's why it's called a D flip flop, it takes in some data, and then it outputs that data, right, on on the clock, right? So, um, uh, here it would output the 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 inverse of it, right, it would infer inverse queue, so if we take a look at my notes for a second here. So when I see, you know, these are D flip flops, so I just want to, you know, absolutely, and it's good, it's good to have some paper that that verifies what you're saying. So if we look here, there's a D latch, da, 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 D flip, there we go, and so there's a truth table for the D flip flop somewhere. It'd be good to find a truth table, there you go, there's the truth truth table for the D flip flop. So it's good to just like remember this, obviously, have this whenever you're working with flip flops, know exactly what its function is, so if the clock is one and the data is one. Right, if the clock, if the clock, if it's clocked and that is one, then, uh, um. Sorry, that's actually, uh, that's this isn't exactly the same thing, because we, it's a edge triggered, so is there an edge triggered one that I have here, yeah, I have an edge triggered. Updates and keep all of these. Right, so, very similar, if I just make the truth table quickly, obviously, I'm I'm sure, you know, I'm not gonna spend much time on this, but, you know, if we have, um. The, uh, the the clock, C L K, and we have D here, right, so the idea is, a- and then if I want to say Q, right? So if the clock is zero, then then this doesn't change, right, Q, so this is Q of T plus one, this is just Q of T, that doesn't change, right? And it doesn't matter, um, doesn't matter what D is, right, so don't care here, but if the clock, if we're clocking, essentially, it's hard to make a truth table, because it's really an excitation table, but. If we're clocking, then if this is one or zero, then this becomes one or zero, right, it becomes whatever it is, so if we're clocking or if we're not. Because it is edge triggered, so from here, now that we know that, what a what a D flip flop is. When I start, the circuit has a value zero, zero, zero here, right, zero, 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 and I and I'm gonna assume that, you know, they don't cross over here, this isn't across, like, they don't touch there, the two lines. So, the input here. Is zero, right, input here is zero, input here is zero, input here is zero, right? Um, so, when I, yeah.
I was gonna say, shouldn't the input be one, because we're outputting the, uh, the, uh.
Yes, sorry, yes, yes, it should be one, good point, uh, that would that would change things, so we're inputting the, we have the complement coming out here, so the D flip flop has two different outputs. One, which is just, you would just call it your Q, and this is always the complement of it, so the complement of it is coming in, so our input here is gonna be a one. So now, let's say I'm gonna clock the circuit, so we start with zero, 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 and that comes from, let's let's draw it here, zero, zero, and zero here, right? Or zero, zero. Zero is the is the Q values, so then it's a one coming out of here, hopefully that makes sense to everybody, this is a one, but the actual state of the circuit is like this. So, this is Q zero, Q one, I'll draw it at the top, Q zero, Q one, Q two. So then, next, let's say I clock the circuit, so this is gonna, this this right here is gonna keep track of how many times I've clocked the circuit, so number. Number of times. Clock. So, if I clock once now, then the data from the D side is gonna go into the Q side, so it's gonna become a one here. Zero is gonna move across here, it's gonna be zero, zero is gonna move across here, it's gonna become a zero, right? Alright, so it's still a zero, but like, it didn't change, but really what's happening is that this zero is moving up across here, right, this zero is moving up to the other side of the D flip flop. And so the output from the negative edge, the negative side of the D flip flop, not negative edge, but negative side of the D flip flop, is gonna still be one, right, so our input here is still one. Now, when I clock a second time, right, um, the, you know, the current state after the first clock is one, zero, zero. So now, when I clock a second time, that one is gonna move over, so Q one is gonna be one, that one is gonna move in, so that's gonna be one there too, and this zero is gonna move over, it's gonna be a zero there. Alright, so we have this as our next step. Okay, so, colors are gonna help out a little bit here, right, so if if that that one's there, that's that's the one there, right, if that's zero, that zero is there. Everything's shifting over, so now our s- our circuit is in the state, it's in one, uh, one, one, zero, so the output here is still one, so it's still a one coming in here. Right, and so what's gonna happen again is everything's gonna shift over, so it's gonna be a one here. A one here. And then, right, we're gonna have a one coming in still, right, still a one coming in, so I'm gonna put that there, so again, let me let me repeat that, right? Clock the circuit, this one moves over, this one moves over, this one moves over, and importantly, not like this moves over here and this moves over here, like, sorry, this moves over here. And then you clock this one, and then you move this over, and then you clock this one, they all clock at the same time, okay, they're all synchronous, right, that's that's the point, is they're all synchronous here. So we don't just move this and then calculate this one and move this and then calculate this one, we we move this over. And then re- record what that next one's gonna be, and then we go back to the current one and move that over. If then, this is the Johnson counter, yeah, this is gonna be a Johnson counter. If anyone has any questions about what I'm saying there, feel free to ask, I can explain differently, but. Okay, sounds like we're good. So, from here, right, uh, it's gonna be slightly different, because look now, what's gonna happen, if I remove all this, right, if I remove these arrows, right, so the current state of the circuit is one, one, one. Right, one, 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 what that means out of this output, we now have a zero, right, zero is coming out of there. And so the inputs to the whole circuit is a zero now, so when I clock it again, that was our third clock, so now I'm gonna go to our fourth clock, when I clock it again. That zero is gonna come in, that one is gonna move over, that one is gonna move over, and that one's gonna move over. Right, and we have something that looks like this. Right, so, the zero is gonna come in to take the Q one, Q zero spot, this one is gonna take the Q one spot, and this one is gonna take the Q two spot, and this one doesn't go anywhere. So we have that. Okay, and the question was, uh, what is the output of the circuit after four clocks, so there we go, one, two, three, four, so I have Q zero, Q one. Q two is zero, one, one. And they just have it, they just have it backwards, right, I just queue that, that's Q zero. That's Q one, that's Q two, so the same thing, they just have the order of their things differently, but that is the same thing. And so you can see that the circuit goes from zero, 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 to one, zero, zero, to one, one, zero, to one, 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 to zero, one, one. And so this is the Johnson counter, right, because it's cycling all these things like that. Okay, so, that's essentially that, any questions about that, if you're any part of, you know, confused about any part there, let me know, I'm happy to explain more. You know? So if I if I ever go too fast in certain situations, just let me know, because I, you know, it's hard to gauge how fast I should go. Obviously, I should try to make these lines a little straighter. That's better, okay, so, sounds like everybody's good, let's move on to the next question that I've got. It will be, let's see, um, I have, I think this is a good one. So, given the following timing diagram with the clock signal that's given, okay, input waveform X and output signal Z. Okay, so we have a clock, input, output, okay, and, uh, you know, th- these two state variables, so the this variable here, I'm gonna just write it a little bit bigger, so everybody can see properly. Let me just sort of cover it, so that I can write it on top, so C L K is right there, right, that's X. Uh, that's Y not. You know, why, I should just use purple for all of it. Why not, and that's Y one. And that right here is Zed. Okay, so, given this, um, timing diagram, try to figure out what the, well, the the question doesn't even, isn't not even part of here, but it. Derives the state assigned table, okay, find the state assigned table, state. Assigned. State assigned table, yeah. Um, so, um, we will. Okay, so, that's the answer, uh, I didn't mean, didn't mean to show that on the screen, um, just wanna make sure I can open it, so. To do this, to do the state assigned table, right, remember that the state assigned table has, first of all, on the left-hand side. It has our present state, okay, present state, okay, the present state is determined by some Y one, let me make sure I'm matching, matching this. Yeah, Y one, just wanna make sure I'm matching the order of the solution, Y one, Y two, okay, because those are the two variables that are controlling our state. And that's something I'm I didn't mention here yet, is that they told us, you know, which combination of Y one and Y two, sorry, Y one and Y zero, um, give us different states, so. Zero, zero, if Y one is zero and Y zero is zero, we're in state zero, otherwise, you know, there's all these other combinations. So, there's a bunch of combinations for present states, I'll say zero, 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 one, one, zero, one, one, those are our possible states, right, and we we happen to have. Four different states here, right, so zero, zero is S zero, right, zero, one is S one. One, zero is S two, and one, one is S three, right, so that that's given in the question here. I'll just highlight that to to help emphasize. So that is given in the question, okay, comfortable so far, I'm gonna really try to make these lines as straight as possible, but. Straight lines are not my, not my forte. A little help from the thing, okay, so so far, I've just created the present state section, then we're gonna have our next state section, whoops, we're gonna have our next state section. Okay, the next state will always depend on the input, right, we have a one column for W zero, one column for W one, right, so I'm gonna call it. Y one, Y zero, Y one, Y zero, right, there's our next. Okay, right, and so, we'll fill this in, using information from the table, can't fill it in just yet, but what I want to do next is my output. And so, from this table, I don't know, like, there probably is some way to figure out if it's a. Well, there's probably the way to figure out if it's a Me- uh, Mealy or a Moore machine is by making this table, and that's a pretty good way to figure it out. Maybe someone who's really keen can can take a look right away, but I, there's a, there's a way to, without knowing, yeah, go for it.
It's a Mealy machine.
It's a Mealy machine, yeah.
Now, on the one, two, three, around the between the third and fourth clock cycle, you can see that the. The states don't change, but the input changes and the output changes as well, so you can see that it depends on the input signals, so it's a Mealy machine.
That's true, and so that's what I was saying, if you have a keen eye, there's probably some way to just look at it and figure it out, so there you go, there's the, there's the way to look at it and figure it out. But it's actually not even necessary, I don't think, to, uh, to even be able to tell right off the bat, just assume it's a Mealy machine, right, uh, a Mealy machine, yes, assume it's a Mealy machine right off the bat. Okay, for, uh, and you 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 make your two columns, W equals zero, zero, W equals one, right, and this is your, this is your output section. Um, and we only have a one variable, so it's just Zed, right, and then if at the end, your two columns are the same, that means that your output does not depend on the input. If that makes sense, right, if you end up with zero, 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 one, zero, 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 one, that means that. The the output of the state doesn't, the the output of the whole, um, uh, circuit does not depend on the on the input. So, uh, then you can see that it's a Moore type machine, right? So for now, I mean, I don't know if that's gonna happen, right, I mean, it's not, okay, so, nevermind, I do know, because because, you know, we saw that part there, but, you know, assuming I didn't know, right, I would just start by just making this. Making this like this, right, I would just say, okay, well, I don't know, but if at the end, these two columns are the same, then it's a Moore type machine. Okay, so, given this, uh, I think I'm gonna try to squeeze things together a little bit, or maybe I'll try to just make this smaller. Because I want to have everything on the same screen, and not have to, you know, scroll up and down all the time, so let's see, can I do that, there we go, that's good. Or probably, whatever, uh, that that looks good, so, now. Let's take a look at some, uh, at some, you know, just try to fill in some information here. So, um, at the first clock, because we want to look at, you know, what's happening at the clocks.
Oh, sorry, just real quick, the input for the question is X, but you have the input.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'll just call it W, whatever.
Okay.
Let's call it W, sorry, that's can more consistent with what we've been studying in in lecture. Um, but thank you for pointing that out, yeah, so now, if I'm in state zero, zero, so, well, actually, let's not even say if we're in state zero, zero, let's look at the first clock, right, what state we're in, so we're coming in. Right, at zero and zero here, so we are in state, state zero here, right, zero and zero on these two, remember, those two are the things that are controlling our, um. They're controlling our present state, right, so at the clock, right, at the clock, we go, um, uh, our next state. Becomes, um, uh, one, sorry, uh, yes, one, zero, right? So from zero, zero, we go to one, zero, but what was the input, the input was one, so the input to the whole function was one. Our state was zero, zero, and then it became one, zero, so we're gonna put a one, zero there. Right, again, I'm getting one, zero from the fact that we have, you know, one, zero here, right, I'll write it here, one, zero, zero, zero. Our input was one, so input one, we go from zero, zero to one, zero, then. You know, our input goes to zero, and then we have a next clock, so now our input in the next, in the next clock here, our input is zero, right, so I'll put that, next clock is a different color, so, zero. And if our input is zero, and we're in the state zero, one, then looks like we stay in the state zero, one. Right, so if we're in the state zero, one, and our input is zero, it looks like we stay in the state zero, one. Someone said something in the chat.
Uh, hold on.
Wait, we're not clocking.
We're clocking, oh, we're clocking here, oh, yeah, 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 you're right, I thought I, I thought I accounted for that.
Also, our new state is one, zero, not zero, one, it's confusing because of the way that they've listed it.
It is confusing because of the way it listed, okay, thank you for jumping in there, yes, for sure, um, so, let's look at the next clock here, this is the next, this is the next clock, yes, this is the next clock.
Uh, while we're doing the clocking, should we also note down the outputs as we're going along?
Uh, yeah, sure, we can say that, so if the, yeah, sure, we can do that as we're going along, yeah, that that makes sense. So here, the output is one, if we're in state zero, zero, so if the the input is one, right, input is one, we're in state zero, zero, our output is one, so I'm gonna put a one there. Okay, yeah, so state zero, zero, input is one, output is one, so. Then in the next state, we're in state zero, one, so we're in state, uh, no, sorry, we're in state one, zero, yes, it's it's gonna be, it's gonna be very confusing to read this, so this. This number comes first, I'll write first, second. Right, so we're in state zero, we're in state one, zero now, so we're in state one, zero. And from here, in state one, zero, right, our input is one, and our output is zero. So in the state one, zero, right, which is which is gonna be state two, right, our input is one, and our output is zero, so I'm gonna put a zero. Hey, there's a space in between for the second state. Okay, now that I know this, okay, let's go to the next clock, and let's see what happens, so we were at, we were in the state zero, one, right, our input is now zero. At the clock, our input is now zero, and, um, uh, when that happens, we move to the state, uh, one, one. Right, that's our next state, one, one here, right, so one, one is our next state, when we were in state zero, one, so if I'm in state zero, one, and my input is zero. Okay, and my input is zero, um, I will be in state one, one next, so we're in state, oh, sorry, no, we're in state one, zero, there we go, we're in state one, zero. Next state is one, one, right, input is, yeah, there we go.
Sorry, just prior to that, uh, positive edge, the input, uh, changed from one to zero while still in state, uh, zero, one, and the output changed, so should we also note that down?
Yes, we will note that down, for sure, yes, yes, we we will note that down next, yeah, just, I was gonna get the next state, but yeah, yeah, that's that's true, yes, there there is the. The next part here, so if we want to look at what's happening at the output here, with the output, so let's just note what we've, what we've noted, so far, we've noted, um, this this one here. And this zero here, okay, and then I want to note this, we are in state, um, one, zero, one, zero, input zero. Output is one, so there should be a one there. Okay, immediately, I can already tell you that this is not going to be a Moore machine, because these columns cannot be the same, so it is definitely a Mealy machine, right, from this. Okay, so let's continue filling this in, you know, it's gonna take, gonna take a minute here, um. Input zero, state one, one, output zero, we got that, um, uh, and then from here, uh, yes, from here, we can just start, you know, move to the next clock, so. I don't know what I should erase here to to do everything good, I don't, I don't want it to be too messy, but I also don't wanna lose any information, so there's our next clock. Move to the next clock here, there is our next one.
Uh, Adam, is now a good time for a question?
Sure.
Is the output, um, determined on clock, or is the output determined, uh, regardless?
So for a Mealy machine, it's it's depending on, right, so for for a Mealy machine, the primary output Zed, right, if this is your. If these are your signals, right, W, the primary output Zed depends for Mealy, right, we're talking about Mealy. Depends on the primary input and the, uh, present state, right, or then that's the, that's the next state, sorry, the next state, right, so capital Y. This changes with the clock, this doesn't change with the clock, this changes with just a switch or whatever, right, it's just a signal, right? So if it's depending on both, then this can also change outside of the clock, right?
Wait, isn't Mealy dependent on the input and the present state?
Yeah, it's depending on, it's depending on both.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, so Mealy is depending on both of these at the same time, the the input and the present state, right, this is the present. So, yeah, so to to answer your question, like, if you have a Mealy machine, and you change the input, that could change the output to the circuit, but if you have a Moore machine, and you change the input. That will not, without clocking, that will not change the output to the circuit. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so, thank you.
Okay, no problem, good. Okay, so now, um, we are in state one, one, okay, our input is one. I've got a good color to use, we're in state one, one, our input is one, and our output is one, let's note that down, we're in state one, one, our input is one, and our output is one, so there should be a one here. Okay, the output, we're gonna note the output, okay, then, right, we clock, and let's see what happens, okay, so our input stays as a one. And we stay in one, one for our state, right, one, one is our state, so, if you are in state one, one, okay, if you are in state one, one. Um, yeah. Yes, so if you are in state one, one. And your input is one. Right, you clock the circuit, you stay in one, one, so the next state is one, one for one, that's where we put that there. So again, I'm gonna repeat that, if you are in state one, one, your input is one, clock the circuit, you stay in one, one. And so that makes sense, the output should also stay the same, I'm gonna, you know, try to even this out a little bit. Okay, there's that, so let's, uh, the output didn't change either, because the input didn't change, so let's move on, well, let's see what's happening here, right? So, zero, one. Sounds like zero, one. For S one.
The present state.
For the present state. Oh.
You put one, zero, on zero.
Thank you. So many ones and zeros, okay. Thank you for pointing that out, so then from here, right, we, you know, we don't clock in this section here, in this section right here, we we haven't clocked yet, but. Um, the input changes in this section, and when the input changes, the output changes, right, so the input is one, but then it becomes zero, here it's one, then becomes zero. So if you are in state one, one, and your input is zero, so if you are in state one, one, and your input is zero, your output is also zero. So that's the thing we can fill in from there. Okay, and then at the next clock. Okay, we are in state one, one, input is zero, we go then to state one, zero, or it's actually zero, zero, one, because you read this first, zero, one. So if you're in state one, one, right, and your input is zero, the next state is state zero, one. So hopefully that makes sense, good, okay, um, then, we can take a look at the output that's happening here, so if you are in state zero, one. And your input is zero, your output is one, so one there. Okay, that's from this one right there. So really, just, we're just taking it step by step here, right, it's just, that's all it is. Um, nothing changes, like, the input doesn't change between this clock, so nothing changes at all until the next clock. So then from here, here, we can take a look at the next one. So, um, we are in state one, uh, zero, one, in state zero, one, our input is zero, okay, and then we go to state. Um, uh, one, zero, right, that's our next state, our next state is one, zero. So if we are in state zero, one, and our input is one, oh, sorry, our input is zero, our next state is one, zero. Okay, so that's the conclusion to make from that one. If you are in state zero, one, and your input is zero, we already know that, we already know what's going on. We already know that that's gonna be a one, so we already filled that in somewhere earlier in the chat, okay, good. Um, so. Yeah, ones. Yes, one, one, oh, yeah, there's one, okay, yes, sorry, I got confused for a second, but we're. Yeah, so then, next, I think we're good so far, next, we can see what happens here, the input changes, the input changes, and if the input changes, then the output's gonna change too. So now we are in, well, not necessarily, but we're gonna check if it changes, so we are in state zero, one, and our input is one, so we're in state, sorry, one, zero, I keep saying it backwards, because it's upside down, right? So we are in state one, zero, one, zero, our input is one, so our output should be zero, we already got that, good, just making sure. Next clock. Right? You're in. You're in falling edge clock, this is, this would be a rising edge clock, right, this is the rising edge here. Right? Is that, I can't tell if that's questioner.
The blue one you just did, I think it's a falling edge, right?
Yeah, well, it's not, that's not a, that's not, I'm, I'm not saying that the circuit's clocked there, I'm saying that the input changed, I'm saying the input changed there, right, so our state didn't change, because it didn't clock, right? But our output did change, right, our output changed, um, because our input changed there, right, so so I'm gonna be clear, like, the green lines are the clocks, the green lines are the clocks, the blue lines are just, I'm just saying that. I'm just saying that something changed there, that's all I'm saying. So then the next clock we have is here, we're in state zero, we're in state one, zero, boy, okay, really gotta focus, one, zero, we move to state zero, one. Okay, so if we're in state one, zero, and our input is one, our next state is zero, one. Okay, input is one, we're in state one, zero, our next one is zero, one. Okay, if we are in state, well, we already know both the outputs for for zero, one, so we don't even have to really do that, that's okay, right, we don't, there's nothing else to do. That's fine. Um, okay, so. Now that I have this, right, nothing changes, no input changes at at this line, right, there's no, there's no, there's nothing changed, there's no point to even draw a line, there's nothing happening, so we can just go to the next clock. And then from here. Um, from here, we can look at, um, uh, the next clock, so zero, zero, one, uh, if our input is one, input's one here. Our next state is going to be zero, zero, okay, so if you are in state zero, one, and your input is one, your next state is zero, zero. And if you are in state zero, zero, and your input is one, your output is also one, oh, wait, if you're in state zero, zero, and your input is one. Your output is also one, yeah, that makes. Your output is also one, yeah, that makes sense. There might be a, I can't tell if that's. Can't imagine how long this exam, how long this question would take on the exam, yeah. So hopefully they would just give a part to this question. Yeah, that makes sense to me. If you're in state zero, zero, and your output is one. Input is one, I mean, your output's also, okay, so there's a slight mistake on the solution, because there's no way that's wrong, that's correct. Okay, we're almost done, you know, let's take a look what's happening here. You're in state. Zero, zero, so this is not a clock, right? I'll say the blue line here, right? It's not a clock. It's, I'm just saying that the input changed, so if the, when the input changed, you're in state zero, zero. I'm sorry, state zero, zero. Yeah, that doesn't fill in there, sorry. You're in state zero, zero, your input is one. State zero, zero, your input is one, your output's one. We already had that there, that doesn't go there, nothing goes, sorry, we don't, we didn't know that. Okay, and then from here, right, we look at, now we're in state zero, zero, and your input is zero, so your output is also zero. Okay, we got that there. Then, when you are clocking, the next clock is here. Right? You are in state zero, zero, your input is zero, perfect, your next state is going to be zero, zero as well, right? Because that's the next state here, zeros. Okay, and it looks like we, we're missing one here. I don't know how we missed one, but we probably just didn't have it. So let's look, let's find when we're in state zero, one, so zero, one, zero, one, let's see, zero, one, here's zero, one, right? And we gotta find when we're in state zero, one with an output of one, so state zero, one. With an output of one, zero, one, with an output of one, our output here is zero. There, I just missed that for whatever reason. So state zero, one, with an, with an input of one, our output is zero. Finally completed the table. So there was a lot happening there, right? Anybody have any questions about what's going on?
Uh, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so how did you know to do a rising edge?
I assumed that, uh, let's see, did it say anything? Uh, given the following timing diagrams with clock, signal, clock, wave, output signal, that, use the following assignments, I, that was an assumption.
I think a way that you can tell is that the state only changes, like the present state only changes with uh. The appropriate edge, so here the uh states only change with the positive edge.
That's true. If I tried to do it with the negative edge, it wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to make such a nice, like, the table wouldn't work out that well. Because you see, at the negative edge, right, the negative edge of the circuits like here, the states never change, like, like you was just saying, right? The the states don't change at the negative edge, right? So you would just have no state changes, and then you would, your, your states would change depending on the input, which doesn't make sense, right?
Okay, so we just check like when the state changes?
Yeah, you wanna check when the sta, when does the state change? Does the state change at the rising edge or the, or the uh falling?
Okay, thank you.
Um, someone asked, isn't the clock always rising edge unless otherwise specified? I think that's actually a fair assumption to make. I don't know if that's actually, like, that's not a rule, I don't think, but they, like. If they don't write it, I think they just meant to write it, and it's just because they didn't, they just didn't get to it. So, yeah, okay, so um great, this was, this was a pretty long question, but does anybody have any questions about this? Happy to answer anything. Sounds good. So, looks like we're done, um, looks like we're done this one then, uh, so it was just, you know, derive the state table, so, you know, it took. That's a long one, but good practice. Um, so let's take a look maybe now at a, what state table, no, I think I wanna look at, I wanna look at this one. Okay, this one is select the correct, what machine is it? It's definitely a melee machine. Because uh the output of the circuit depends on the input variable. Right, so it's definitely a melee. But again, if you were doing this process and these two columns ended up being the same thing, it's a more machine, because the output does not depend on the. Okay, so next question we have here is, well, it's a select the correct state, but we don't, we don't have that, so. Draw the state diagram for the circuit, right? Uh, this again, just some, someone sent me this, so uh, let's take a look at what's happening here. I, I think I need. Well, whatever, let's just make some sort of assumption here of what the, what the current state is, what the present state is, right? Um, so let's say the present state is going to be, I don't know, zero, zero, right? So that means we're in state S one. Um, let's say, uh, first of all, let's note here, is this a melee or a more, also a more first, so is this a more or a melee machine? Right? Well, what we do to determine that is we look, is our uh, is the output to our circuit connected directly to the input? Right? Or is it connected rather to the present state? So uh, as you can see here, right, it's connected to, it's connected to the present state, right, and the present state. So since it's just connected to the present state, this is a more type machine. Yeah.
That's your next state, by the way, not both present states. T one is your next.
Yes, I don't know, yeah, yeah, this is, this is your next state. So this is your, yeah, this is the present state, yeah, yeah, this is, this is the present state here, so it's connected like this. And it's connected, um, oh, then it's connected to the.
Sorry, isn't this a melee machine?
Well, it's connected to, but is it connected to the output directly?
Uh, it's just like the change in the X could change the output of. Is that even if the block doesn't occur?
You're definitely right, yeah, okay, so if we change, but yeah, you're, you're definitely right, so we are connected here. Yes, I was looking at the wrong one, because I labeled this, I labeled this the present state, so, yeah, uh, yes. Because it's connected to T one, yeah, just because I, I by accident labeled this one uh as the, the uh, the present state, then. That doesn't make sense, yes. So it is connected to the next state, but it is also connected to the present state, it's connected to the variable here, so it is a melee machine, you're right. It would be more if it was only connected here, yes, it would be more. Right? But again, yeah, so like, like someone was just saying there, if we, for example, like, if this was one and this was zero. Right? Then the, the output here, right, this is, this is an X or, right, so the output here would be one. And so the output here would be one, let's just say this was zero, so the output here would be one, right? So um if I then switch, th- this, this variable here, the blue ones, they change. When, like, the circuit is clocked, right, these two ones here, they, they change when the circuit's clocked, but if I were to just change this one to a zero. Right? Then this would be, this would be a zero, right? This would be a zero, and this would be a zero. So you see, without clocking the circuit, I changed the output, so that must be a melee machine. Yes, I, I made a mistake. So any confusion about that? I said it's important to just understand how it connects to the input there. Okay, sounds good. So um, let's, let's continue then, so now, you know, it's a melee machine, right? So that means that the present state doesn't necessarily depend, uh, sorry, the output doesn't necessarily depend only on the present state. Um, so to get just an idea of, of what a melee. Diagram looks like, let's take a look at a melee diagram, that's a, that's a more one. So a melee diagram looks kind of like this, right? So this is saying that, you know, if we are in state A. And our output is, sorry, our input is zero, our output is zero, if our input is one, our output's zero, and we clock it, we move to here. Right? So there's always, from every state, there's the two options coming out of it. There's the if W equals one, or if W is equal to zero. So from here, we certainly have to have, you know, if W equals one, then, then Z equals something. Right? And then we also have to have another thing coming out, which is if W equals zero, uh, you know, then, then Z equals something. Right? So again, from every state in the melee type um diagram, you need to have the two. Two uh arrows coming, two transition lines coming out. So. If W equals one, so if we're in state S one, I guess, sorry, let's stay, let's start with state, yeah, S one, that's, that's what was labeled here, right? So if I just make an assumption here, I say we are in um um. Our present, present state, present state is zero, zero, right? Then uh the output here, well, that's zero there, and then this line goes here, it's zero there, okay? So if we are in state zero, right, we'll, we'll state variable zero, zero here, right?
A lot faster, a way to do it a lot faster would be just, just make the state assigned table. It goes so fast, because. You can quickly derive the functions um of the relations between them, and then the state assigned table can fill it in two minutes.
Fill it in like that, okay, sounds good, so we'll try that. Let me, I'll just do maybe one or two states like this, and then, and then we'll try to see how it fills in, yeah, that makes sense. So um, if I, if the input is one, right, so, okay, again, I'm using, I'll just use the W, because that's what I'm used to using, so I'll just use W. So if W is equal to one, then we have a one here, we have a one here, we have a one here, so if W is equal one, the output's one. If W is equal to zero, we have a zero here, we have a zero here, right? Um, so the output's zero. Okay, so we have that there. I didn't even need to write it yet, but there we go, there's that like that, right? And. When it's clocked, let's see what happens, right? So if W is equal to one, right, then we have all these, well, what's really important is we have a one here. Right? And then here, well, the inputs here are gonna be zero and zero. Right? The zero's coming in like that, the zero's coming in like that, so the output here is gonna be zero. Right? And then when I clock the circuit, this is going to be one and zero, right? But it's, it's, so, yeah, one, zero. So we're gonna go to S two, so when W is equal to one, we're going to S two. One, going to one, zero, yes. Yes, we're going to S two, right? That'll be our next.
Wait, could you just quickly explain why when you clock, it becomes one?
Yeah, well, essentially, oh, it's a T flip-flop.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm, I, I really gotta, I really gotta focus more. Okay, so it's a T flip-flop. That is an important thing, I shouldn't have assumed it was a D flip-flop. So let's go, just make sure we, we know what a, you know, the operation of a D flip-flop, so essentially, it's just gonna toggle the output there. Right? That's why it's called a, a T flip-flop, and so here we have our. Truth table for a T flip-flop, so the output here is, the input to the T flip-flop is a one, right? Input to the T flip-flop is a zero here. So when I clock the circuit. We have a one here, right? One, it's going to just complement what was here already, so it was zero, zero to begin with, so now it's going to become. We assume it's secret, is, yeah, we do assume it's secret, because I don't think we deal with any kind of asymptotic circuits here. Right? Um, so if the input is one, that means on the clock, we're going to toggle the output. So now the output is gonna become a one, because we were in state zero, zero, so now it's gonna be one, zero, and so this is still, this is still gonna be one, zero. And so one, zero is gonna be S two. Okay, so, so same, same reasoning, but yes, it is going to be a, it is going to be a T flip-flop, not a D. Right, so, good to know this. And then from here again, you know, we would just say, okay, well, we moved to two diff, there's two options from here, right? Either go here, or we go to another state, right? You're gonna go here, or you can, you can go this way, or you can figure out what's gonna, what's gonna happen like that, right? Let's, let's do one more, let's just figure out what the next state is for S one, if W is equal to zero, so let me erase all this, we're assuming present state is equal to zero, zero. Um, and so if W is equal to zero, then this is zero, this is zero, this is zero, right? Maybe I'll set these to, to blue, right? So that means this is zero here, right, and this is zero here. Right, zero here, so we're just gonna stay in the same state, right? It looks like we're just gonna stay in the same state, because what's gonna happen is. The inputs to both of these are zero, so it's not gonna toggle it, right? So what's gonna happen? Um, we're doing the state tail version two, right? Uh, let me just draw this arrow here, right? Uh, yeah, that seems to, that, that's gonna be a simpler way of going about doing this, but for sure, understanding it from the circuit is an important thing too, right? So we're gonna stay in the state like that. In fact, whenever W equals zero, right? I'm quite certain, whenever W equals zero, oh, no, no, but then you could have, have a one here, so never mind, like, that could, that could, yeah, okay. So. Then we have this, right? So we could, we could complete the state table from that, so let's, let's, let's try to make a state assigned table that's going on here. Um, and. Although it would be a similar process, so let's, let me, let me make the state assigned table here. And we can, you know, much more easily fill in this table after. So I'll make some rows here, columns. Well, actually, I should give more space for that, put that there. Do we have this? This, and then we have. This. And then we have this. Okay, so this, wow, really crooked. There we go. So um, we're going to want to do this now. Let's see if I can make it any kind of more uh. Quicker, so present state, then this is the entire next state section, this is W equals zero, this is W. W equals one, this is your output. Oops, output, this is W equals zero, this is W equals one. Melee machine, so we have W equals zero, W equals one, um, and then I'll just put in my present state variable, so zero, 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 one, one, zero, zero. Uh, one, one. And so we get, that's S one, S zero, S two. S two, yeah, S three. Okay, um, and then from here. Right? We're gonna wanna just fill this in, and it's gonna be easier to, to do the table from this after. Um, so uh, if our present state is zero, zero, so what we can fill in from here already is if our present state. Is zero, zero, and this is going to be zero, uh, sorry, it's gonna be one, zero. One, zero, so if our present state is zero, zero, and our output is one, our, uh, our input is one, our output is also one. It's gonna be zero like that, right? Um. W equals one, our next state. Our next state is going to be uh one, zero, right? And here, we don't know what the, what the next state is gonna be, so let's take a look, let's try to fill it in here. So if W is equal to zero, our next state. Is going to be, well, it's gonna be the same one, so we're gonna stay, we're gonna stay exactly there, yeah, that's what we determined before. And so from this, this is essentially where you get this, this whole picture like that. And then let's continue here, right? So from state, you know, um, S zero, so let's say we're in, we're, we go, we're gonna fill in this row now. Let's try to fill in this row, right? So what that means is I'll start with just first of all, W. Is equal to zero, okay, and we are, our present state is, and I should just be clear here, this is uh. Y one, Y zero, right? Y one, Y zero, and this is capital Y one, capital Y zero, capital Y one, capital Y zero. And that's, of course, just that. So Y one, Y zero, there we go. So from here, right, um. Uh, if we are in state S zero, which means our variables are zero, one, right? And our input is zero, I wanna figure out what the next state's gonna be, what the output is, so let's start with the output, right? The output is, so it's, it's a zero here, well, let's, let's figure out what's going in here. Is it a fashion code, Boolean expressions, or T zero, T one, Y zero, Y one? Uh, T zero, T, T, okay, T zero, T one.
Hey, you can solve the question in two minutes that way, you can just say is the output Z is Y one, small Y one, present state, X or T one.
Yeah.
And then uh, T one, which is your presence, I'll just call them T instead of capital Y, so. Small Y's are your present state, Ts are your next state, so Z is Y one, X or T one.
Yeah, okay, let me, let me write that, let me write that down for, so yeah, so Y one, X or T one, so X or. T one, yeah, that makes sense.
And T one is Y zero, X or X.
X or Y, yeah, X, W, yeah, so Y zero, yeah, because of the present state.
Y zero, X or W.
X or W, yeah, and then T two.
T zero is Y zero, X or one.
Yes. Uh, T zero is going to be Y zero, yeah, so that's, one of the inputs is gonna be Y zero, and then we're gonna X or with Y one.
Y one.
That makes sense, yeah, perfect. And then, so from here, essentially, we have um. Uh. Uh, yeah, so from here, essentially, we have a way to determine. The next state, just given these variables here, right? So we don't have to actually draw it in the circuit, that makes a lot of sense, so thank you for that input there, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. So now, right, if I want to tell you what the uh, you know, I guess I should call this, I'll call this Ts, just to, to stay consistent here. So that's a W, and then that's a T. Zero, T. That's T, and that's T, yeah, that makes sense. So now, um, uh, zero, one is our Y one, Y zero, zero, one. Right? So T one, right, well, let's do T zero first, because that's, that only depends on these two, right? Um, so T zero will be the same between these two, because it doesn't depend on um, on W, so we wanna X or them, right? Uh, so it's going to be a one, there's gonna be output of one, right? Because they're not the same, so it's gonna output a one there, so both of these are gonna be a one like that. And then for the next one, let's just do all the T zeros, I think that, that makes sense, do all the T zeros, so this is also gonna be a one. Because Y zero and Y one are not the same, and this is gonna be a zero, zero there, right? Because they're the same, so X or these two is gonna get you that. Okay, so I'll just, you know, highlight here a little bit to help the understanding. And so I filled in that section of the table. Now let's do T one. So T one depends on Y zero and um, Y zero and uh. And W itself, right? So zero, X or zero is gonna be just zero, so that's why we got that here, right? One, X or zero is gonna be one, zero, X or zero is gonna be zero, one, X or zero is going to be one. And then similarly, zero, X or one is gonna be one, one, X or one is gonna be zero. Zero, X or one is gonna be one, one, X or one is gonna be zero. Okay, so again, I'm just using the fact that we derive these formulas for things like that, definitely a lot faster, yes.
Wait, I have a question.
Yes.
So essentially, our next state is the uh value right before we. So essentially, our next state is the, uh, value right before we enter the flip flop. Not, not the Y one.
This is our present state, right? That's what the current output of this, well, not output of the circuit, but that's what the current state variables are.
Right, state, okay. So T one is right before we enter the flip flop, that's the next state.
Uh, that's the next state, yeah, that's the next state. That's what's gonna go in, one, once we clock, that's what's gonna be stored in memory.
Um, could you just go over how you draw, I got T one for W equals one? Because when I did it, I got the same as T one, so I must have made a mistake.
Yeah, T one for W equals one here, yeah.
Yeah.
Y zero, X or Y zero, X or W, right? That's, that's the formula we have for it. Mm-hmm. Y zero, X or W, so zero, X or one is one. Right?
Yeah.
That's right, one, X or one is zero. Zero, X or one is one, and then one, X or one is zero.
Oh, oh, yeah, right.
Right, yeah. So why is the next state T not Y? Well, so the, essentially, you wanna think about what's gonna go in, what's gonna be stored to memory next time we clock, right? Uh, right, next time we clock, what's gonna be stored into memory? What's the thing that's here, the variable that's here, right? Or not directly stored in memory, because it's not a D flip flop, but what's gonna affect the stored memory, right? It's this right here. And the stored memory is essentially our, our, um, state, current state.
Does this account for T flip flops, though? This kinda looks like a D flip flop. I'm not sure, because there, oh, it's only, T should only be, if T is one, then the output should flip. Like the, the, uh, so I'm not sure, because if you look at like, okay, present state zero, one, right? We're saying the next state is one, one, but what we're actually saying is that T one and T zero are both gonna be one, which means. If T one is one and T zero was one, the output of the D flip flops flips, so you.
I see.
The next state would actually be one, zero, correct?
Okay, let's see, yeah, so if, if we had, uh, you were saying if our present state was, sorry.
Because the T for T flip flop, it's just.
It's gonna flip it, yeah.
If T is, is, is one, the output is opposite of whatever it is presently. So next state is the opposite of the input state. So would you have to, like, we have equations for T one and T zero. But, um, was that the same as like Y zero plus or Y one? Like, is that the same as saying that it's this, like, it's the next state? Are those values?
I see, I see what you mean, right? So yeah, if, if we were to try it out here, right, and we said this was zero, zero, right, zero, zero. Um, and then, yeah, so it was zero, zero, and you were saying if our W is equal to one, and, yeah, if our W was equal to one. This would be a one here, right? So zero, zero, W is equal to one, our next state should be, well, yeah, it should be one, zero. Because this input here is going to be zero. So that's, this actually seems to, uh, it works for this one at least.
What about the second, um, row on the.
Second row.
Assigned table, like where we have, um, present state is zero, one, and then if X, if the input's zero as well.
Zero, one, input is zero as well, okay, zero as well here, let's try it out, so zero, one.
Other, oh, no, it is zero, what's right.
Yeah, that's right. So then, uh, this input here is gonna be a one, so it's a one here, right? And then this input here is also a one, so it's gonna be a one here, regardless. Oh, actually, I guess I have to check if this is zero. Yes, I have to check if this is, this is zero. Oh, no, I don't have to check if it's, if it was a one, I have to check if it's a one, but there, so that's a one there. So now, if our input is zero, we're in state one, zero, one, yeah, we're in state zero, one. Our input is zero, our next stage should be one, zero, that, that seems right to me, yes. Okay, so what I'm thinking. Is that effectively what we did here is we did it with D flip flops. And then we need to use that conversion idea, right? Convert this to the D flip, uh, the T flip flop. Um, idea like that, right? There's the conversion table that we do to just, to just, to do that at the end here, which is like that. Does that sound right for, for, for people who are, uh, knowledgeable with it? I hope it sounds right. Yeah, that sounds right, okay. So we're gonna have to use this table to convert it. So, yeah, so, so, so it's, it's T, but this is using D flip flops. Using D flip. Okay. So what's next is the Z value, so the Z value is Y one, X or T one, right? So what we wanna do is we just wanna.
Sorry, why are you writing down it's using D flip flops?
Because this table right here is, 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 what we've created is the table if it was D flip flops. Here.
Well, didn't we create the table, it's T flip flops, and then we need to convert it into D flip flops afterwards?
I think the other way. Yeah.
I mean, but the diagram showing for T flip flops, though, right?
That's true, that's true, and so what we want is the state table, which represents for T flip flops, right? But just using, see, we're creating this table with only these functions here.
Yeah, which are in terms of the T flip flops.
Which, well. This is T to convert to D, someone said in the chat too, this is a T flip flop to convert to D flip flop?
Yeah, because when we're drawing state diagrams, it's always with a state assigned table or state table, which is using D flip flops.
Yeah, when we're creating state diagrams, we wanna use, sorry, we wanna use D flip flops, is what you're saying, when we're creating these ones.
Yes.
Yes, yes. So then, what we've done here. Yeah, makes sense. Oh, yeah, that makes sense, okay. What I'm confused about is just that we have D flip flops here. This circuit has T flip flops, obviously I see that, right? But this does not represent what's happening with, uh, T flip flop. Like these, these next circ, the, the, the next states are not what's happening if it's a T flip flop, do you see?
You can, you can just extend this table, though, and add, instead of where you have inputs. Like, this next state part is actually just the, um, flip, the flip flop inputs. You can just move the next state over, where the output is, and then move the output over again, and then use the, um. Use the, the T values that we have now, along with the present state, because that's, that's what this, our, a T flip flop works, right?
Yeah.
If the present state and, um, the, uh, T, if the present state's on and the, uh, T value's on. Then the, the next state will be inverse of the present state.
Yeah, so you just take the present states and then see whether the respective T values is zero or one. If it's one, you'll just flip that, um, that bit, if it's not, you'll just keep it the same. So for example, if you wanna convert that table to the D table, um, the first row is gonna stay the same, I believe. Or no, it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be the same numbers there. But then the second one is gonna be present state is zero, one, but then the next state at W zero is going to be, uh, one, zero instead of one, one.
It's gonna be one, zero, because the first bit is flipping and the other one's not, and then the other one would be zero, zero.
Both are flipping, because both are flipping, look, because at, at, uh, at, at S zero, right? Your next state, your T is one for both of them, so you're flipping them, you're flipping both, your Ts one.
My T zero, my T zero is one for both of them?
Your T one and T zero are both, are, are both one.
Oh, in the actual next state, in the actual, yeah, yeah, okay, only looking at W zero.
At W zero, we don't care about W one.
Okay, okay.
Both are, both are, T, both Ts are one, so it flips it. So then, um, on, on the D flip flop, it should be zero, one, and then at W is equal to zero, that should be your next state is, uh, you flip both, uh, both bits. So it's one, zero. Does that make sense?
Be one, zero, because, yes, for, so, so here I would write, so what, what, essentially what I'm saying is that, this is like my T flip flop. This is the actual next state. Right? What I'm gonna put, what I'm gonna put here, right? W equals zero, W equals, that's, that's what I'm essentially trying to do here, this is like my T flip flop, right?
Yeah.
So then, what you're saying here is I put one, zero?
Um, yes, yes, and the next one would be zero, zero for W one.
And let me just make sure I under, I understand exactly why, what's happening. So, um, the present state is Y one, W, what is zero, one. What that means is that the, um, uh, if the input is one into a T flip flop, when you clock it. The, it's gonna flip the bit, the bit is gonna flip, right? So here, that means this one represents that we're flipping the second bit in both of these to get to the next state. And this zero represents that we're not flipping that bit to get to the next state.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
You put the truth table on the left, so, uh, you have a present state, then you have the next state of that present state. So and then depending on your T, you will either flip that bit or keep it the same, that's why the, the top row doesn't change. Because, for the, for W zero, because both Ts are zero, so you'll just keep it the same.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, so then for this one, neither of them are flipping, yeah, so it's gonna be zero, zero and one, zero here, right? Because nothing's flipping, let me, we go across here. And then here, we wanna flip the first bit, so it's gonna be one and zero like that, and one and one like that.
No, wait, what? Oh, no, no, because at W zero, uh, your T zero, so it should, it, it will stay one. And then, okay, yeah, one, one, there we go, that makes sense.
That's fine, that's good, okay, yeah.
One, one, and then.
And then zero, one, one, one for this one. And that's again, because what we're representing is that here, it, since both of these present states are one, that means the T flip flop will flip both of the bits. Right? The T flip flop, flip flop will flip both of the bits here.
And this, this does make sense to me, I don't know if it's right, but this makes sense.
Okay, sorry, why are you saying that if the present states are one, then the T flip flip will flip? Isn't the present state like the output of the operation that you're doing?
No, no, just look at, look at the present state as Q, oh, oh, that, oh, that depends on how you look at it. So present state is a QT, well, present state is your QT and your next state is QT plus one. So that's, that's my, that's my logical reasoning, so you will take your QT, which are your present states, and then you'll find the QT plus one. Depending on that, and then your T value, so that's how you fill the table.
So if I'm understanding correctly, we have in the middle there, those, the, the two, uh, columns in the middle are the D flip flop. And then from there, we're converting to T.
No, 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 the two columns in the middle are your state assigned table for the T flip flop. And then on the columns on the right, the two columns on the right are your diff, are your D flip flop state assigned table. Because look, we have T there, you don't have capital Y, you have T, that's why, that's why he uses T zero and T one. To, in the, in the question as well, to show you that you're using the T flip flop state diagram. If it was using D, we'd probably say capital Y zero and capital Y one.
Okay. So, so what, can, can, can we go over what the, the two columns on the right are and how we got them?
Yeah, I'd like that as well.
Yeah, that's what we just did, though, so.
The col, the, the two columns on the right, essentially, are, you take these two middle columns here, right? You take these two middle columns here. Um, and we, we look per row, okay, so the present state, if the present state has a one in either position, right? So let's look at this one here, right? We have a zero in the first spot and a one in the second, sorry, so. That means our first bit is not gonna change when we move from this set to this set. Right? Our first bit is not gonna change, right? Our first bit's gonna stay one, zero, one, zero. And our second bit is gonna flip, because we're gonna have a, the, the T flip flip's gonna toggle, so it's gonna be zero, zero for that, it's there. And we did that.
Oh, so the, the two rightmost columns are the, those are the conversions from T to D.
Yeah, let's look at the conversion table, someone suggested here that we look at the conversion table.
I, I, yeah.
Yeah. So.
I, I did it on my own time while you guys were doing that, uh, I found that the right two tables that you guys, the right two columns that you guys. Produced for the same outputs, once you use the table to convert.
To convert there, yeah, okay, right, so that's good, that's, that's, that's good to hear, right? So, um, yeah, okay, there we go. So if we're going from zero to zero, so we have a zero there, yeah, so if you're using the table, right, that means if your present state is zero. Oh, boy, come on, there we go. If your present state is zero and your next state is zero, then your, your T flip flop would be zero. Right? You have a zero like that, right? And then similarly, if you're going from one to.
No, you should, you should do it the other way, so, uh. Yeah, your second zero is in your next state, it's your T value, so you should go like, present state T, then you'll find the next state.
Present state T as in, oh, as in here, as in like here?
Yes, that's T, that's not the second state, yeah.
Yeah, 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 from here to the, uh. Uh, to the wa, to where?
Okay, so can, okay, look, uh, your first column in your, your table.
Yeah.
Is the first column on the, on the paste table, right?
Yeah.
Your second column, or your second and third column on your table are the fourth columns in the, in the conversion table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that goes there, so that, that is that. And that is, that is that, okay. And then this, that means that this must be. This here, right? So that must be your next state thing right there.
Yep.
So that means that if our, so then to fill, but if we wanna fill in this table, oh, then we can just say, okay, I'm going from zero. So green zero to zero, right, zero to zero, so my next state should be zero here? That's the logic that we're going, going with like that?
Yeah.
Like, like this, yeah.
Shouldn't that be under W equals zero? Cause you.
It's the same thing, you have zero.
Oh, okay, you, but it's only in this case, it's. Yeah, it's the same for both, so, okay.
Yeah. Okay, well, so we essentially, uh, there's nothing else to do, essentially, we, we have our table filled in. So I can just, I can just start building the, the state diagram, I think from here. Uh, yeah, and so this is our present state, and this is our next state, and this is the table I use for building this right here. Hopefully that all makes sense. Hopefully that, that is, that is correct, okay. So, um. Yeah, okay, so I'll just draw all the circles for our present, for our, our states, I mean. Right? So all the circles for our states, we have S one, S two, S three, and S zero, right, so S zero. So if you are in, uh, S one, we've already dealt with, right? So that means if you, let's just confirm that what we have on the table here matches that, so if we are in S one. Right, S one, um, and W is equal to zero, then you will stay in S one, correct? If you are in S one and W is equal to one, you will go to state S two. That is correct as well, right? Um, oh, I guess I didn't have the, I don't have the, the Z part here, but we can do Z from, we can do Z from here. Um, so now if you're in state S two, well, actually, I should have, should have just. Um, if you're in state S two, which means your present state is one, zero, right? And W is equal to zero, your next state. Is going to be one, one, one is S three, okay? Okay, so we have this, right? Yeah, because we wanna make a state, yeah. Um, so if we are in state S two and W is equal to one, did I say one, sorry, no, if W is equal to zero, right? Then we have that, and then our output, I'll deal with the outputs in a second, let me just get the whole chart going here, okay? If W is equal to one, right? W is equal to one, so in your state S two, W is equal to one, your next state is zero, one, zero, one is S zero. So that would be here, W is equal to one, Z is equal to the, I will answer your question. Okay, so what if the two flip flops weren't the same? Um, yeah, what if the two flip flops weren't the same?
I don't think you're ever gonna be given a question where the two flip flops aren't the same.
You, it's still the same procedure, you only convert one of the flip flops then, instead of both.
To get the next date?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
That would be such a douche move.
Already did an example of that, so, I mean, I don't think it's out of the question.
Oh, did he? Yeah, like, Reza did that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't remember, I, I remember doing that, but okay, we'll take, we'll take a look.
The last.
We'll take a look at his. Let's, let's try to go through that one too, that'll be, that'll be a good one to go through as well. Okay, and then from here, we have, uh, Z, well, Z we don't know, okay, so then, um, let's look at our S three now, right? So if you're in S three and W is equal to zero, you're gonna go to S zero. Okay, so W is equal to zero, you're gonna go there. Right? And if you're in S three and W is equal to one, you're gonna go to one, one, which is S three, okay? So if you're in state one, one, W is equal to one, you're gonna go to one, so W is equal to one. Said, we'll talk about in a second. Okay, so we're almost there, we just gotta figure out what's happening from S zero, so if you're in S zero, W is equal to zero, you go to one, zero, which is S two. Okay, so that's for W is equal to zero, and then we have our Z is equal to something. Question? No, someone's just unmuted, Parva, it's unmuted, there we go. Um, so then if you're in S zero and you move to, and, and your input is one. So then you're gonna have zero, zero as your next state, which is S one, right? So S one is over here, so of course my diagram's gonna get all screwed up now, so. Say W equals zero, Z equals. There we go, W equals one, Z equals that, okay. So let me just remind us, getting ready for timing diagrams, yeah, for sure. Um, so we'll, we'll do more examples like that, yeah. Um, let's make sure, like, I, I write down the present state, so yeah, zero, zero, one, zero, S three is one, one. And S zero is zero, one, so now I just wanna find the output, so the output is Y one, X or T, right? So X or T one, sorry, Y one, X or T one. Um, so I, I think you just do that from this table here, right? So if our, let's say our, our present state, our present state is zero, zero, right? And, you know, that, well, okay, we already know that, actually, S one, we already know the two outputs there, so let's do one that we don't know, right? So for, if our present state is S zero, right? S zero, right, which is right here, S zero, we have two arrows coming from it, right? Um, so, um, if W equals zero, let's start with. Right, W equals zero, we gotta look at our T value, so it's Y one, zero. And I said W equals zero start, so Y one, T one, zero, X or one is gonna be one. So, zero, uh, that's going to be one, I already wrote that somehow, I don't know why I wrote that. Um, returning to the Boolean algebra functions. Looks like you guys got that under control, um, then if W is equal to one, right, then it's still Y zero. X or, the first one, zero, X or T one, so that's zero this time, so our output is going to be zero. Okay, maybe we got that, um. Let's do S two next, so it's gonna be here, right, so S two, I'm going to take Y one, X or T one, so one, X or. Zero is one for W equals zero, that was for S two, W equals zero, we get one, S two, W equals zero, we get one, there we go. And then similarly, uh, one, X or one is zero, so zero is our output there, okay, we're almost done. Then we have, uh, S three, right, S three is this, is this one here. Um, and so if we have W is equal to, uh, yeah, whereas they one, one. W is equal to zero, let's start with, right, you're gonna do, again, remember just our formula is just Y one, X or T one, so Y one. X or T one is gonna be zero, right, so that's going to be zero. And here it's going to be one, X or zero, which is going to be one, and there we go, there's our state assigned table, whereas there's our. Um, uh, state diagram. Okay, that took a lot, that took a lot of steps, let me try to recap to the best of my ability here. Um, so. What we did essentially. You made the state diagram, there is part. Yes, the arrows, I did the, yes. Yes, for the arrows, I did the.
Um, just in case you wanna do the example, Reza did, I sent you.
Okay.
screenshots on Discord.
Great, thank you, yeah, that would be a good one to do for sure, and that's, that's some of his work there too, you sent me?
Uh, yeah, uh, that's all he did, he left the rest, uh, as an exercise for students.
Okay, sounds good, yes, we will definitely take a look at that.
He also didn't upload the version with the solution, so anyone who didn't attend the class, they were pretty much.
Yeah, I see, okay, so.
Yeah.
That's good that we got it sent here, yes, um, so, okay. Let me close this. It's here. So, let me try to recap, but if anyone can, you know, support me here, uh, so let's see, um, we have, we started with the circuit, right? We know what the states, the state are, the states are assigned to us, right, so. I wanted to make a diagram, so I think we, we decided that, you know, I could, I could sit here and start just plugging in numbers into the circuit. But we could also make, try to make a state assigned table for the circuit, right, um, and so. With, with drawing state diagrams on, yeah. So from here, we, okay, so first of all, the present state is just the, all the combinations of the present state, just labeled, that's what that column is, okay, so then this column here. This we created using functions of Z, T one and T zero, right, the func-, like, we define functions for Z, T one and T zero. Here, which are these inputs like that, right, but we had to convert this. Into. Using like these T flip flop things right here, like that, right, we had to convert that into, we had to get our next states. By using T flip flops, we are using T flip flops right now, right, so. Typically, I think what I've seen done is that, you know, you, you connect these two to find what the T flip flop equivalent would be, but no, we, we want to know what the next state would be in a D flip flop. Right, because to make this diagram, we need to know the next states as a D flip flop. So, what we did is, is essentially, we know this, present states, of course, and we know the T flip flop. Present states, uh, T flip flop next states. Um, so this would, that, that, you know, obviously, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the T flip flop. Flip, flop, up, flip flop, um, and next states, next states. Which is fine, but what we want is we want the D flip flop next states, and so to get that. We essentially said, okay, I can connect, oh, didn't mean to change the color, right? I can connect from here to here, so if my present state is going from zero and my T flip flop is zero, right? Then my next state is going to be a zero, right, like that. And so I did that for all of these to find all these different points right here, right? Um, so I, I, I did it slightly different, but that's, that's, I think, a better way of doing it, just, just connecting it to the table, right? And then, uh, from there, I can fill in the rest of the stuff from the diagram here. Okay. Let's. Let's, uh. Let's take a breath, that was a, that was a real mess of a question, so I hope everybody, you know. Got something from that, uh, you know, a lot, a lot of stuff going on, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask. We can try to go through them, for sure, and thank you for everybody for all your support through it, right? That's, that's great.
Could you show the circuit, I'd like to take a photo of it? Thanks.
Also, this will be posted after, right, the PDF, this will be posted.
Oh, okay, okay.
But, but of course, you can take the picture. Um, okay, so I think now, let's try to do a, um. Maybe a VHDL question, cause I wanna get one of those through. Because he said there would be some VHDL, so let's at least do one VHDL question, I think that would be.
Adam, can we also do a chapter seven question after the VHDL? Because so far, everything that he's posed in class, and it's, it's all just chapter eight, and. I'm, I feel like I'm pretty good with chapter eight myself, but chapter seven is just the, I, 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 I have, I honestly struggle more with chapter seven than eight.
Yeah, I know what you mean, I know what you mean, especially some of the homeworks, the, there are, uh.
Yeah, and I don't know like what type of questions could be on the test, because most of the stuff that they, that's on the book. On suggested problems or design questions.
Hmm.
So I'm like, uh, I don't know exactly.
I know what you mean, I know what you mean, for sure, yeah. Uh, I think, okay, let's, we, we will try one of those, I don't know, I, I think I have some, I have some suggestions for that too. Uh, let's actually, let's actually do this. So any question before we go? No, sounds good, okay, so, um. Let's start here, the question says, describe the behavior of the given FSM, oh, someone's unmuted. Okay, um, so, the, describe the behavior of the given FSM, um, uh, using a state diagram. So, obviously we wanna make a state diagram, so let's take a look at what's happening here, right, let's, hopefully we can understand all the code here, so we have a clock coming in. A reset coming in and a, and a W, that's, that's a W, right, so a clock or reset, and Z is our output here, right, great, okay, so. Um, uh, you know, this is just the beginning code, right, signal Y is just gonna be your state type, okay? We'll see, we'll deal with that in a second, um, so then. If reset equals zero, then Y goes to A, so it looks like, uh, oh yeah, we have three options for states, A, B and C. That's what's essentially happening here, we have A, B and C as our state types, and particularly, you know, reset is this one, right? Cause if reset equals zero, then, uh, Y, the state, the current state goes to zero, and so that's, um, uh. That means that our reset is gonna be a low active reset, right, but that's fine, nothing wrong with that, it's just, it's just a low. Okay, a question, say it, oh, say it's, here, you're gonna say something? No, okay, okay, um, so, um. From here, if the clock event, like, as in we're clocking, and the clock is one, so it's the clock event, right? So, case Y is, if our state is A, right? If our state is A, and the input is zero, then stay in A, is what this is saying, right? So if we're clocking. Right, and the input is zero, then stay in A, if the clock isn't zero, as in the clock is one, go to B. Okay, that's what that's saying, we haven't dealt with the outputs yet, right, so I can't tell anything about the outputs, Z yet, but. Let's just understand how state is going from state to state here, then when we're in B. If Y equals, uh, if W equals zero, right, then go to A, okay, then go to A here, so W equals zero, that means go back to A. Okay, otherwise, right, go to C. W equals one. Then if we're in C and W equals zero, go to A, okay? W equals zero, go to A, otherwise, stay in C. Okay? Right, so this is, uh, W equals, uh, one. Okay, so we haven't talked about output yet, right, so let's take a look at the output here, so. Z is one when Y equals C, else zero. Okay, so I, I mean, I've never seen the VHDL code written like this, but hopefully, you know, it's understandable still, right, so. Z is one when Y equals C, else zero, Y is our state variable, where is it, Y is our state type, right? So, um, uh, if we look here, you see, it just depends on what state we're in, right, it just depends on the present state. Right, it doesn't also depend on W in any way, so this is going to be a more type machine, and so, you know, here is that equals one. And the rest of them, Z equals zero. So we got that. Okay, and that's pretty much it, describe the behavior using a finite state, you know, so we, we described it here like this. Can I repeat what I just said about the output, or about just the whole thing? Either one, I can do, about why it's more, yeah, so a more machine, remember a more machine has your, well, your primary output, which is Zed. In a more machine, it just depends on the state you're in, right, you can just say, okay, the, the circuit's in the state, so that's why it has this output. Right, and so if you look at it, right, the Z is one when Y equals C, the state is the C state. Otherwise it's zero, so it only depends on the, um, present state, the fact that the present state is, is C, right, that's it. No problem, yeah. Okay, so that's that, it's really just understanding code, but it's not super complicated code, so, uh, you know, hopefully people can understand. Obviously, I, I don't know what every single line exactly does here, right, like, um, but like, I, I could. Just actually explain it pretty well, like, I don't know what the libraries do, I have no idea what the libraries are helping us with, I just said you have to put them in the front. Um, but if someone asked me like, what does, what, what functionalities do the libraries give me, I don't know, so they've not really.
I think the libraries are the same in any code, right, it's adding.
Seems like it.
Functions or like, statements and stuff.
I don't see, I, I don't know, yeah, so like, I don't know.
Know if you don't add it, it'll say that certain words don't exist, even though you know that they do, like the word architecture or something like that, like. It'll be like, oh, I don't know what that is.
Oh, really, I see, so it's just like.
I know from experience.
Yeah. I see, I see. Okay, so, yeah, there's that question, any questions about this one? No, okay, okay, great, sounds good, um, let's look at.
Think we should also mention whether or not, like, just to answer the question. Or fully answer the question, whether or not it's rising edge or falling edge.
Yeah, if it's rising, so it looks like it's gonna be a rising edge, unless I'm mistaken.
It looks like it's level triggered, not even a rising edge.
No, I think it's rising.
Well, it says clock event, so I think.
Yes, when the clock changes, and the clock is one, so that's rising edge, right?
I'm quite certain.
Means when. The attached variable changes.
I, I remember there being a specific rising edge command in one of the VHDLs.
I do also remember that, yeah.
The rising edge is the same thing as this entire big statement.
Okay, 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 seem pretty confident about that, so, then, we'll, we'll, we'll take that, yeah. Um, okay, yeah, there's two ways to represent a rising edge, then, there you go, yeah, so it's, yeah, so like, like, like he was just saying, yeah, it's, it's saying, you know. Check if there's a clock event, as in the clock is changing and the clock is one, which means if it changed and it's one, that means that's a rising edge. So if it's a rising edge, that's saying else if rising edge, then, then this, right, so yeah, that's, that's a good point, though, to understand that. Okay, great. So let's take a look at another one here, um. What would it be if it was falling edge, yeah, you'd say, you'd set it to zero here. Yeah, no problem. What if it's level triggered, then you wouldn't have clock event? It would just be clock is one. How do I know it's more from the code? That deciding if it's more or merely is entirely about the output Z, so if I look at the output Z, let me just, you know. The output Z here is just saying, Z is one when Y, when the state is C, otherwise it's zero. So you see that the output entirely depends on just the state, and so that is a more type machine. So falling edge is the same, well, falling edge would be a zero here, you'd say clock zero here. You are at the falling edge, that sounds bad. Uh, in the state diagram, oh yeah, state diagram, yeah, 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 that would be the same. That would be the same, the, the, the state diagram. There would be no difference there. Okay, great. So let's try some other ones. I'd like to do, let me see.
Oh, by the way, I just sent the textbook page explaining the, uh, clock events stuff, if you just wanna briefly show that, so people can screenshot it.
That's great, thank you for sending that, yeah, so, here.
Just for reference, it's on page four hundred twenty-three.
Yeah, there you go, four twenty-three, so it's saying, you know, this is, this is code for a D flip flop, so it's saying here, in this case, the event. Attribute refers to any change in the clock signal, combining the clock event condition. With the condition clock equals ones means that the value of the clock signal has just changed and the value is now one. Right, so this is saying, if the value of the clock signal just changed and it's now one, then clock the circuit, I do whatever it says there. And so that's, um, yeah, exactly, so, exactly right, what you're saying. Uh, we can't tell if we're dealing with a latch or a flip flop. I, well, we can tell we're dealing with a flip flop, because it's, it's love, it's edge triggered. Right, it's, it's edge triggered. I don't think we have a le- level sensitive FSM, I don't think I've, we don't do that, I don't think, I mean, you probably could try it, but. But no, like, it's okay. So yeah. It kinda defeats the purpose, yeah, exactly. So like, any FSM that we construct will be only using flip flops. Any FSM given to us, I guess, could be with latches, but again, that's not a very effective FSM, and I don't see why we would do that, right? Okay, so, um, that's good, let's try to see, I don't know, I, I have some more questions, but they're mostly. Chapter eight questions, right? Uh, Reza would say you get fired within three months, yes, for sure, um, so they're mostly going to be. Chapter eight questions, and yeah, I like to do a chapter seven question, I think that chapter seven stuff really combines a lot here, right? Um, like combines a lot of stuff here, so, like, it, it comes together in chapter eight. So, does anybody have any suggestions for, say, Ed, you said you wanted to do a chapter seven question, do you have any particular suggestions for?
That's, that's a thing, you know.
Yeah, yeah, as I looked through the chapter seven questions, and like, some of them were weird, and I don't know, but like.
Yeah, the thing, the thing about chapter seven is that it feels like a toolset for chapter eight, the same way that chapter four was like a tool for chapter. Six.
Six, yeah, yeah.
Like, you wouldn't, you wouldn't expect to see a chapters four question on its own, and we didn't, we had, we had like one K map question.
Yeah.
K maps were like, more like a tool to use for chapter six, and chapter seven feels like the same thing, I don't know, it just feels weird to ask about flip flops and. Counters and stuff without the actual states, but that's why I'm confused about chapter seven.
I understand for sure, I understand for sure, yeah, so I don't know, I don't have any particular questions, um, and I looked through, so yeah, I don't, I don't have any, so if anyone wants to suggest a chapter seven question for me, we can go for it. Um, now, this, this question is a pretty long one, so I don't know if we're gonna do it. But someone also asked if we can do more examples where we convert between DT and JK flip flops. It's a pretty long, it's a pretty long question, so I don't know if we're gonna do exactly this one, but, um, you know, this is essentially produce the circuit that does this, I could probably find a, a shorter question for this. Um, but then we could possibly do it, you know, using some kind of flip flop, using whatever flip flop we wanted to do, right? Um, and so we could choose like that, oh, someone sent me a couple questions, okay. Uh, what? What, um, how did you send them to me, on Discord? Sorry, I don't, I don't know your Discord name, what's your, what's your Discord name? Ah, yes, sorry, I didn't, I didn't recognize your, your name, okay, so, um. Oh yeah, here's some chapter seven ones, let's take a look, yes, you did send some, we did this one, let's see, well, these are. Um, three bit counter sequence, this is a. Write the transition conditions for this, so that's not too crazy. I think they're actually pretty much all chapter eight questions, which you sent me, because they all have state diagrams, so if they all have state diagrams, they're all chapter eight questions, right? Um, there's some interesting ones, though, definitely interesting ones, um, but, yeah, I think they're all, they're all chapter eight questions, it looks like. Unless I'm missing some here.
Let's just do the up counter and the down counter from chapter seven, that should be pretty light and pretty doable.
Up counter, like, okay, yeah, like, um, well, uh, let's see, modulo what, what, I don't know, module three or something? We can do that or four.
You can also do, I think if we're, I mean, if it goes with counters, um, like gray code conversions.
I could do what, sorry?
As that gray code conversion, like gray code to buy, gray codes like, uh, um. It's, think of it like if you had to count in binary, but by only changing one bit at a time. Instead of two, instead of going like zero, zero, one, and then zero, one, zero, that's two bit changes, right?
Yeah.
Gray code counts, so every next, every next number is only one, um, one bit change.
Than, than the last, yeah, that's true, yeah, 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 I understand what you mean, so you're saying build a counter with that, or?
No, uh, you probably could, but no, no, you can.
Essentially a Johnson counter.
Only one bit change at a time? Only one bit change at a time? I guess that is essentially a Johnson counter, cuz yeah.
Yeah, it is.
It is Johnson, yeah. That makes sense, yeah. Uh, someone asked in the chat, chapter seven asks us to build counters and stuff, but don't we need state table to design the counter? Yeah, so the chapter seven doesn't ask you to design the circuits, it just says, look at the circuits and see how they work, and then in chapter eight, we design circuits. So yeah, how about we do a modulo three counter? Let's do modulo modulo three counter. Okay, um, and then we'll convert it to, I don't know, J, the T flip-flops or JK flip-flops, I guess, we'll see after. Does that sound good as a plan for just practicing some more stuff like this? Okay. Yes, sound good? Okay, sounds like everybody's good. Um, so I'll make the state diagram just to get an idea of what's going on here, right? So modular three counter means our counter is gonna display zero, one, two, zero, one, yeah, zero, one, two, and then three, no, not three, zero, one, two, and then zero, one, two, and then zero, one, two, right? So it's gonna keep going like this, da, da, da. Right, so now I gotta convert that to binary, so zero, one, but I need two bits now, right? So it's going to be one, zero, and zero, zero. It's gonna keep going like this. So that's really the sequence that's happening here. Right, that's our sequence of states. So it's gonna be three different states, essentially. The output of the state, I'll do it as a more type, so we have, uh, well, I'll say, I'll say A, um, Zed, one, Zed, zero, sorry, this is messing up on me a little bit now, the tablet. There we go, so there's our first state. Then B is going to be Zed, one, Zed, zero is going to be zero, one, and C is going to be Zed, one, Zed, zero. It's going to be one, zero. So there's our three states of the circuit, right? Uh, this will be our reset. Reset, okay. From here, it's gonna essentially go like this, right? That's, those are our states there. That's, that's how the circuit's gonna progress. Like this, um, and so this will happen re, well, regardless of an input, essentially, we don't need an input, right? So I could just say, I don't even have to write an input, there's just no input to the circuit. I guess we can say like an enable, we could have like an enable, but we don't necessarily need that, so just it'll always clock like this. This is how it's gonna go. Right? Only clock, yeah, we only, we only, we'd only have a clock here. So then I'm going to make a, a state table first, right? So if our state is A, sorry, I gotta unplug this and plug this back in. So if our state is state A, B, C, that's our, that'll say our present state, I guess, present. State. Okay, then our next state, which doesn't depend on a variable, is going to be B, C, A, right? And our output, right, Zed, one, Zed, zero. Oh boy, Zed, one, Zed, zero. Come on. Sorry, the tablet's being weird. Don't die on me now, there we go, okay. Y, one. Oh, I guess I call it Y, zero, actually. The tablet's being, being annoying, of course. There we go, Y, one, good. Then from here, our output is going to be zero, zero. Right, zero, one, one, zero. So any questions about how I went from the plan to the diagram to the state table?
So the output refers to the current state, correct?
In this, I made it be that, yes. In this particular case, yes. The, the output, so it's a me, it's a more type machine.
Right, so there's a link between the, the first and third column, as opposed to the second and third column?
Uh, there's a link, like, yeah.
The output is, is pre-clock.
The output is pre-clock, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So now I'm gonna go to a state assign table, so I'm gonna say present state. Okay, I'm gonna say Y, one, Y, zero. Oh, I guess I should have called that, you know, that, that isn't really helpful, actually, to say that, so let me, let me erase these ones. That's not actually what that is, cuz we don't have those variables yet. Um, so A, B, C, so Y, one is zero, zero, right? B is going to be zero, one, and C is going to be one, zero, and then I also have to account for the fact, one, one, but there's, there's just no state there. There's just no state there. Right? Okay, well, actually, I don't need that big. Zed. I'll just say. Output, output. Right? Said one, said zero, well, it's gonna be zero, 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 one, one, zero, don't care, don't care. Next state. Hey, just I need a, I need a capital Y, one, capital Y, zero. So the next state here is state B, which is zero, one. The next state for B is state C, which is one, zero. The next state for, for, for C, the next state for C is state A, which is zero, zero. I don't care. So I've created my state assigned table. Again, this is a pretty simple one, cuz there's no input variable. Um, and it's a more type, so it's pretty simple. Right, so and we don't have any kind of state D here, right? So it's, it doesn't really matter what's going on there. Okay, so from here, um, we can derive the functions for Zed, one, Zed, zero, uh, and then Y, one, Y, zero. Right, that's what we need to derive. Well, uh, you know, just by inspection, the output is always the state, same as the state, right? So I can just say Zed, one equals Y, one, and Zed, zero equals Y, zero. So I don't need to do a K map for that, that's fine. Right, it's just always equal to that. Okay, so hopefully that makes sense. And then for Y, one, well, let's try to see if we can take a look at some sort of combination here, right? So I get zero, one, zero, right? So it looks like this state here, I mean, I can do this by K map, but I just wanna show you that you can also, like, if it's simple enough like this, you can do it just by logically, like, just by inspection here. Right, so I'll show how to do it by a K map too, but, but let's, let's just look here, right? So uh, I'm trying to find a function for this with relation to these inputs, right? Um, so uh, zero, one, zero, don't care, matches this, zero, one, zero, don't care, right, essentially, right? So it looks like that the Y, one is just equal to your Y, zero. And now this one, right, Y, zero is one, zero, 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 one. It doesn't particularly match any of these. Let's see what's going on here. Well, zero, zero gives us a one, zero, one gives us a zero, one, zero gives us zero. So it looks like if any of them, any of them are one, right? Then it gives you a zero as an output, right? So that looks like a NAND to me. Yes, that looks like a NAND to me. So it's going to be Y, one, and Y, zero, NANDed.
Could also be an X nor.
Could also be an X nor, yes. Yes, that's true. That is true. Okay, there we go. So I derived it without the use of a K, K map, right? We didn't, obviously, you can do that for bigger ones, but for here, it's okay. So now that I have that, again, this is with D flip-flops, uh, automatically, it's the D flip-flop, so let's build a circuit with D flip-flops here. So the D flip-flop is going to look like this. Clock goes here, so this is going to be your Q. That's not gonna be your Q, that's going to be your D. That's gonna be the Q, and we'll just leave that empty. Um, so I'll just say CLK here, and I'm gonna need two, two of them, right? Because, uh, I have two state variables. CLK, okay. Input. So, um, my output has two variables here. So let's say this is Zed, one, and this is Zed, zero. Yep. And so let's say this output here is Y, one, and this output here is Y, zero. Right, so it's pretty simple, Zed, one equals Y, one, so I just connect these guys up. And then I connect these guys up. Zed, zero equals Y, zero. Great. Then my next state, one, is equal to Y, zero, so I'm just going to connect this around like that. Okay, my next state, one, is equal to Y, zero, and my Y, zero, next state is Y, one, and Y, zero in a NAND gate together, right? So I'm just going to take um, this output like this. This output like this, why don't I just connect it here, so? We just do this here. Right, so here, they're gonna go into a NAND gate like that. And this will connect like that. Okay, and there we go. There is a circuit that will is a counter modulo three, right? So it's gonna keep going, it's gonna go zero, one, two, zero, one, two, zero, one, two. And so we did that just using the whole process here. Now, I'd like to do this using different types of flip-flops, right? So let's convert the state assigned table into, you know, using different kinds of flip-flops. Um, so uh, we are going to need to use the conversion table, of course. So that is here, right? Use the conversion table. So can we try with a JK flip-flop? Yeah, sure. So the output, I'm gonna move to the side. Right, I'm going to then, uh, let me, let me make sure I know what I'm doing here. I'm gonna open up the example just to match it, so that I'm not gonna make a mistake. Uh, yes, okay. So we're gonna have new columns here, right, for the difference flip. We don't have an input, which is, which is convenient, right? We don't have an input variable. So actually, I didn't need to make that much space. That's a little bit overkill. Um, so that's fine like that. Just move that there, right? Um, there we go. So now we're gonna have to have a J, so we're doing JK flip-flops, that's what we're doing, right? So we're gonna have to have a J, one, K, one, J, zero, K, zero. Right, and that's because the JK flip-flop has two inputs. Then from here, to figure out, sorry, to figure out here, what our, you know, table has to be when we fill it in, right? What we do is we just, okay, so we match this. So, so present state is zero, present state is zero. Next state is one, zero, one. For our JK flip-flop, zero, it's going to be one, don't care. One, don't care. One, don't care goes there. Okay? And then we just continue this pattern, right? Zero, 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 we get zero, don't care. Okay, so really, this is more about matching the pattern here. Oh, can you explain how you got your Y, zero again? Because wouldn't Y, zero have to be one, 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 D? Let's see, Y, zero, Y, zero, one, 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 D, and Y, zero. I'm sure. Zero, one, 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 don't care. So Y is capital Y, zero? Yeah, so these two, if you and these two together, you get zero, so the output should be one. If you and these two together, you get one, so your output should be zero if you NANDed. And if you a, and these two together, I'm sure you understand this, you get one, and your output should be zero. Right? Where do you get zero?
Shouldn't it be a NOR, not a NAND?
Yeah, cuz one and zero.
One and zero.
Zero, it's one, one or zero gets one.
Gets one.
So it's an X nor.
Yes, that's, that, that, that makes sense to me. Uh, why did I think otherwise? I, that made sense to me as a NAND. But yeah, zero and, zero and zero gets one, the NANDed, zero NAND zero gets one. Zero and one gets zero, and that gets one. Yes, so that wouldn't make sense. Yes, that's what I put. Okay. So oring them together, zero or zero is zero, invert that is one. Zero or one is one, invert that, you get zero. One or zero is one, invert that, get zero, and then we don't care about the last one. Okay, so yes, that makes sense for an or instead of a NAND. It's gonna be an or there. Good point. Probably should have checked the circuit. Yes, that's true. Okay, so we get that like that, or a NOR, really, is what you're putting. Okay, good. Thank you for checking that. So now, let's, uh, let's finish completing this table, so, uh, zero to one, zero to one is one, don't care, right? One to zero, one to zero is just, uh, one, sorry, one to zero is don't care, one. Um, yeah. Uh, one to zero? Oh, we already did one, zero? Yeah, one to zero is don't care, one. Zero to zero is zero, don't care. One to, well, don't care, I think we just say don't care, don't care, don't care, don't care. Right, it doesn't matter. Okay, so I filled in this table, and now I just wanna figure out some sort of function for, uh, to have for, oh, sorry, I gotta restart one note quickly. There we go. Um, I wanna figure out some sort of functions here for J, one, K, one, J, zero, K, zero. Right, and have those as inputs to my JK flip-flop. So, um, let's start with, uh, J, one. And so J, one, looks like it's just Y, zero, right? Because it matches these two, and then we, we don't care about these, these ones here. So it looks like it's just Y, zero. Obviously, correct me if I'm wrong, but yeah. And then this one, K, one, uh, we can just say it's equal to Y, one. Right, because it's just much of a don't cares, right? So we can just say it's equal to Y. It's the one matches. J, zero is going to be equal to, well, it's almost equal to Y, one, but it's just inverted, so it's just equal to not Y, one. Right, cuz Y, one is zero, one, this is one, zero, you don't care about, like, they don't care, so you don't, you don't care if these match or not. So it's gonna be inverse of that. And then K, zero is, once again, I can just use Y, zero for that. So now, when I build the circuit, right, now when I build the circuit, and I think, uh, that the output doesn't change. Yeah, there's no reason the output should change. So, oh, no, no, but the output was yeah, yeah, the output doesn't change. So, uh, J, K, you get whatever your output there, right? Uh, I'll just connect that to a clock. I guess I'll call it J, J, one, K, one, J, zero, K, zero. So there's that, you get this flip-flop there. You get that output. And then you get your clock here. Oh, I guess I'm gonna get in the way of the, the thing, but whatever. So um, then we have our outputs again, so Zed, let me use a different color. So we have our outputs. Zed, zero, or I'll say Zed, one first. Zed, one, Zed, zero. And so, okay, well, so what, what's, what's Zed, one? Zed, one is just Y, one, right? So this would be Y, one. This would be Y, zero, so Zed, one is Y, one. And this still matches like that, that doesn't change. Okay, so now we gotta figure out, okay, so J, one is Y, zero, right? So I gotta just start matching that, right? So that goes like this, this, and this, so that connects there, right? Then K, one is equal to Y, one, so this can just connect around like that. A J, zero is inverse of, uh, Y, one. I have to remember if a K flip-flop has that second output. Does a K flip-flop have two outputs? One which is negative of the other, or one which is inverse of the other? It does? It, it has a queue, it has a queue. I just wanna see that in my notes here, but I, I believe you, I just wanna see it in the notes here.
Does it make a difference if it does or not, though?
Uh, it's just I can use that. It doesn't really make a difference. I can just use it here to help a little bit, right?
Yeah, all the flip-flops have a complemented output.
They all have a complement output, okay. Right, so now I want Y, one compliment, so I'm gonna take Y, one compliment from here, right? And I wanna put that to J, zero. So I'm gonna take Y, one compliment from here and put that to J, zero. Okay, and then, uh, K, zero is Y, zero, so I can just put that around like that. And there we go. The same circuit, this isn't an input, this is just a, this is just a line. Uh, there we go. So, um, we have, uh, the same thing, right? We have the, the same output, but now it's with JK flip-flops instead. Right, so that's the, that's the last bit there that we have. Okay. There's that. Okay, should we try the one that Reza did with two different flip-flops? Does that sound good? Yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay, someone asked, how did I come up with the equations here? I came up with the equations here by looking, comparing the, these columns with these inputs. Of course, if it's more complicated and you can't tell, do it with a, do it with a, uh, K map, right, comparing this, but I'm essentially just creating a function for this, these outputs based on these inputs. Right, and so for, like, for J, one, right, it's zero, one, and then DD, right? So that's the same thing as as Y, zero, because it's zero, one, and then I don't care about the other two, so I don't even have to check those, right? But it matches the first two, so I match those. So I did that for. Uh, don't account for the rising edge clock or falling edge clock, like, if your FSM has one rising edge flip-flop and one falling edge, the state table wouldn't care. Uh, the state. I can't, yeah, so someone's asking here, if this, if the state table doesn't care if you have two flip-flops, one of them is rising edge, one of them is falling edge, um, would the state table, like the state assigned table, change at all? It's just that you're clocking then at two different times, right? There's two different times, so I don't know if that would essentially count as an asynchronous circuit. I think it would count as an asynchronous circuit. Because because the two flip-flops are not all being clocked at the same time, and so we don't deal with asynchronous circuits. Does that make sense as an answer? Yeah, okay, sounds good. Okay, so I know we only got a few minutes left, so let's, let's finish up with that last question, you know, we'll see how long it takes. Um, but, uh, let's just, let's just take a one second break. I gotta go to washroom. So let's take a one minute break, and I will be back, and, uh, we will finish that last question. So I'll pause the recording for just one second, and I will, I will be back. Let's continue. Uh, is everything working? Oh, I think you can't see me yet. My camera's strange. Hopefully you can hear me. Is the audio going through? Yeah, I think it is going through. Okay, we're good. Okay, there we go, we're back. So, um, let's try that question that was sent. I'm recording again. Yes, I'm recording again. Let's give it a go. Let's see. So, so what's happening here? Okay, so this is the question. Right? We have this circuit, so two different types of flip flops. And the question is, I guess, derive, derive what? The question is, do we make a state assigned table? Yeah, I guess let's make a state assigned table. I'm just gonna check more here. Yeah. Um, I agree. So let's see what's going on. So to begin, um, the state assigned table, I, I guess, like, the question is, make a state assigned table. Make a state assign table for it. Okay, so to begin here, we will make the state assigned table, okay, so obviously it starts with a present state. So the present state, uh, how many states do we have? Well, we have two flip flops, so there's possible, total of four possible states here, right? Um, and so, uh, let's just say, well, zero, 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 one, one, zero, one, one. Okay, and, uh, I can just call this, well, Y two, Y one. Right, Y two, Y one. Um, yeah, that's, I'm gonna get confused because one's on top of the other, but let's not change it. So, there we go. Oh, wow, that's not a straight line. So now we have this. I want to make my next state. Next state. Okay, we do have an input, so I need to have W equals zero and W equals one as two possibilities here. But after that, it's not too much different. And then, let's take a look at our Z value. Right, so our Z value, is it a Mealy or a Moore machine? Is, is an important question to ask. Let me just say Z here. Well, what are the inputs? So the first input is going to be Y one. Right, that's the first input here is gonna be Y one, which is a present state variable. And then Y two is the other one, right? Y two is the other one here. So it's also a present state variable. So it's, it's a, it is a Moore machine. Confirmed. It's a Moore machine. So we don't have to have two columns for our output. It's just going to be a, a single output, well, a single column for the outputs. We can deal with that in a second. So now, to figure out what the, um, different ones are here, let me just see for a second how he did. I'm looking at, I'm looking at how he did it here. Wouldn't it be Mealy since the output is from the combinational part? It's more about what it depends on, right? What it's a function of. So you see, Z, if I just make a function for Z here, well, it's equal to Y one and Y two, right? Y one and Y two. Not depending on W. It doesn't depend on W. Right? So I, I think a part of, something that's confusing a lot is that you see these cables coming in to, so you, you would imagine that it goes like this, right? And that's how I imagine sometimes, and that confuses me. What's really happening is that this is, this signal is being taken out from here, right? But the real signal is coming in like this, right? It's coming in like this. And these are coming out, so it doesn't really connect to the W in the front of the circuit, right? So, yeah, okay, hopefully that makes sense. So, sorry, so, um, now, we need our next state variable. So the next state variables are, uh, T two and D one. T two and D one. Those are the variables that are going to be coming into the, coming into the, um, the, the flip flops, whichever flip flop we're talking about. Right, so I can, well, what I can do is I can derive some sort of function for T two and, uh, and D one. Right, and fill in our table like this, right? So T two is going to be, let's see what it is. So it's an or operation, right? Between two and operations, right? So this one's gonna be ANDed, and this one's gonna be ANDed with three things, right? So the, the two and operation, one of those is going to Y two, and the other one is going to not W, so W complement. Then this one, this three, three and gate one, i- is going to, uh, the first top, uh, input is Y one. The next one is just W. And the next one is Y two complement. Y two complement, cuz that's, that's Y two complement coming up. Right? Okay, so, uh, let's just confirm that that's the same thing that matches with the thing here. Very good, okay. And then D one is not super complicated. It's just that, it's just an and operation between, so it's an and operation between W and some or operation, which is going to be, okay, so it's gonna be Y two or Y one complement. Y two or Y one complement, yep. And with W. Okay, so we've successfully created our variables here, and you see that, uh, they both depend on W. So it makes sense that we have two columns here, right? There's two columns. They both depend on W. Um, but we get different answers. So let's, let's just try to fill it in. Let's see what's happening. So zero, zero, and zero. So it's all zero, so zero, and it's just gonna be zero. Wizard, well, actually, no, sorry, it's not all gonna be zero. So zero, well, we'll see. I can't just say that outright. So zero and one is zero or, uh, zero and zero and one is zero. So zero or zero is zero. Okay, so we are successfully zero there. And then, um, uh, if I do, in the D here, it's gonna be, um, so it's gonna be zero or, sorry, zero and one, right? Which is just going to be zero. So we get a zero there. Okay, is any faster way of filling this in? Let me know. I don't know. This is how I'm gonna do it. I'm just gonna use the function.
So I just wanted to ask, yeah, did we decide this was a Mealy machine or?
It is a Moore machine.
Okay, um, for D one, uh, for W one, it's, there's a faster way where it's just all zeros, because since, uh, it's Y two or Y one complement ANDed with, uh, W, since W is zero, then that's always.
A whole column.
Okay, so, so this will all be zero.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, makes sense. Yep, that, that makes sense to me. Um, yeah, that's good. So that, that's a good point. Um, if so, if anyone didn't understand that, it's because we have, you know, if, if W is zero, this expression will always be zero, essentially. If W is zero, this whole expression will always be zero.
And you can also solve for W one pretty quickly, so, um, when W is one, so that's the whole part is one. When Y two is one, so the last two are both one, and then when Y one is zero, so, um, midterms, zero, two, and three are your.
Yeah.
And then zero.
And then, and then here, yes, there we go.
No, wait, yeah, yeah, okay, I, 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 I confused the one of D one with the first one.
Yeah, there you go.
And then for T two, uh, that's just the sum of products, so those are your only two midterms, so.
Uh, that's just the sum of products. Uh, do you have a W in?
Yeah, so the only, you have only, should have only two ones in both columns, and the rest are zero.
And the rest are zero? Yeah, I see, I see what you mean. So it would be then, well, let's see, okay, so.
One, zero would be zero for your W zero.
One, zero.
Well, one, zero would be one, sorry, and then there.
Would be one, yes.
A way that you could look at it is just, um, since there's only a W not in one of the terms and a W in the other term, for when W is equal to zero, you're only looking at the W not term.
That's true.
And then for that to be equal to one, Y two has to be equal to one, and then when Y two is not equal to one, then it's zero.
So that would mean, this, this, this is my table for this.
Yeah.
That would be my table, yeah.
And then you do a similar process for the other one.
It's just one, one, zero, so it would be, um, for W one is zero, one, the second one.
Yeah, that makes sense. So let me just explain again. So what, essentially what's happening here is just that we have, uh, you know, if, if W is equal to zero, right? Then this whole term goes away, and we just have this term. And then if W is equal to one, like in, oh, that's not, W is equal to one, then this whole term goes away, so we just have this to focus on, and that's essentially the idea. Uh, but yeah, okay, so there we go. We, we created that. And then so it's, someone just said it to me. It would be, instead of me figuring, so one, one, zero, one, you said, or?
It's, uh, for which one?
For this, for this.
Yes, it would be, it would be one, 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 zero. No, it would be, sorry, it would be zero, one, zero, zero. Yeah, I was reading.
Zero, zero, like that? Okay, I'll trust that. I'll trust that user, right, yeah.
Another way that you could look at it is that, since we're looking at that one midterm, cuz W is equal to one, then you just look, there's only one possibility for it to be one, because ANDed, which is.
No, 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 wait, Adam, uh, the one, one at the left column, it should be zero. So T two is zero for one, one.
T two is zero on the left column? T two is zero for one, one?
I believe so, yeah, because what were you, what you're saying is that.
The answer is, yeah, the same as this.
No, wait.
What, what, what Adam did right is.
I think this should be correct.
It's right.
Okay, okay, I made, I made a mistake, man, sorry.
Makes sense, yeah, but that's good, okay, then don't worry, yeah. Um, okay, so then, uh, our output Z is just the AND of Y one and Y two, so it's just going to be one, zero, zero, zero. And there we go. Um, okay, so now that I have that, I have this table, I want to now convert this to, um, well, I mean, that, that's, that's the state assigned table. So actually, there's nothing else to do. That's the state assigned table. But if you wanna convert it all to the same, um, all to the same flip flop, or something like that.
Yeah, I think the question altogether is just asking for the state diagram for the initial circuit.
The state diagram. So then we wanna convert it all to D flip flops. That's, that's the idea, that, right? So, um, to do that, we are going to have to take this table and convert the T flip flops to D flip flops. So let me see if I am going to be able to do this correctly. Let me, I have to close one.
Um, just like a shortcut for converting from T to D, or the way I do it.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Um, I shouldn't know, sorry, I, I'm thinking about the opposite way, but, uh, uh, if I remember correctly, it's like if the present state is zero, then the T to D conversion, eh, you don't really change anything. There's T is zero, and D is zero. But if the present state is one, then you just invert it.
Yeah, that makes sense. We did that, but we did that before in a previous example, yeah. That's true, yeah.
And then it's similar for J and K, where uh, the present state gets one.
Yeah.
Then it's the, you invert it, and then if it's zero, then you don't invert it. But the, when you change the present state, you also have to change the do, don't cares, but.
I see, yeah, okay, so we'll, we'll try, yeah, we'll do it like that for sure, for the, for the converting from, um, what's it called? The T flip flop to the D flip flop, right? So my next state entirely in D flip flops now, so that means I can draw D one, yeah, so I can draw next state with D flip flops, next state with just D flip flops. So it's going to be, I didn't need that much space, but W equals zero, W equals one. I'll divide it, right, right there, whatever. Um, and this is going to be D two, D one. D two, D one. So, um, D one doesn't change, zero, 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 zero. Yep, and, um, the same thing here, one, zero, one, one. Okay, so then from here, we wanna do, uh, the D two values, so we're just gonna convert from T to D. And so let's take a look at the table to be able to do, to be able to do this. So we are going from present state, present state T should get zero. So if your present state is zero, T flip flop is zero, D flip flop would be zero. So nothing going on there too crazy. So, um, we're only gonna look at Y two, in this case, only looking at Y two. So zero, zero gets zero, and that's because zero, zero gets zero. Okay, so this is what I put there. Just gonna color code things here to help out a little bit with the understanding. So that zero is that zero, and then that zero is that zero. Okay, so hopefully that makes sense. Then here, we're gonna have, okay, zero, zero also gets zero. One, one also gets zero. Oh, sorry, one, one, one also gets zero. Okay, and then one, one also gets zero. So we just get entirely zeros on that one. Okay. So, um, that's, that's that, great. And then D two, when W equals one, it's going to be comparing here like this now. So zero, zero, again, zero, zero gets zero. Zero, one, okay, that's it, zero, one gets one in this case, like that. Yeah, I didn't fill it in, but yeah. Um, and then one, zero, one, zero gets one. There, and then one, zero, same thing, gets one, like that. There we go. So that's what it is with the D flip flops, and so we can derive some formula for it now. Uh, Z Z, we don't have to change yet, okay. So then D two equals zero, D one equals zero. Something really else to say there. Um, D two, sorry, uh, that's not true. D two equals D two equals, yes, okay, sorry, there's, I have to account for something more here, right? I thought, why did I do that so fast? What did I, what was I thinking? This was the same.
Sorry, why are we making equations now? Can't we just go to the state diagram?
Oh, yeah, you're right. So I thought we were gonna hit the circuit. That's why, that's why I was making equations, cuz I thought we were gonna make the circuit. Um, but yeah, we could, we could also make the circuit. Oh, no, we know the circuit. We have the circuit here. Uh, this is with different flip flops, but, you know, same circuit. So we can make the state diagram now, yeah. So, uh, we have four states, so I will say A, B, C, D. Um, this is zero, zero, this is zero, one, this is one, zero, this is one, one. Uh, and then the output entirely depends on here, so I'm just gonna say Z equals zero, Z equals zero, Z equals zero, Z equals one, right, zero, 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 one. From here, we just look at what's the next state. So, um, uh, when W equals zero, you always go to one, to A, I mean, right? So when W equals zero, you always go there. Okay, W equals zero, like that. Then from here, um, let's take a look at each state now. What if W equals one, right? So if you're in state zero and W equals one, then you go to zero, one, which is state B. Right? So you go like that. W equals one. If you are in state B and W equals one, you go to one, zero, which is state C, or state, yeah, state C. So you're gonna actually go like that. W equals one. Then if you are in state C and W equals one, you're going to go to state D. Right? W equals one, and then if you are in state D and W equals one, you stay in state. And there's your state. Okay, there we go. So we have that, and so we could have also converted this, well, could we have converted it to JK flip flops? Both of them to JK flip flops if we wanted to? Yeah, why couldn't we? We could, yes.
You could have, but then you can't draw those state diagrams.
Yeah, you can't draw a state. I'm just trying to think, yeah, could, would we be able to? Yeah, we, of course, we could have. We just have a lot more variables to deal with, but yes. Okay, well, that's pretty much our time for today, it's eight, eight seventeen, so that's pretty much the time we got. So that's all the content. That's all the, that's the last main question I wanted to go through. I'm happy we did one with different flip flops, so you see that we just make different chart, columns here. Um, but if you could convert to JK, well, the state diagrams are essentially based on the D flip flop ones, right? Um, because it's essentially saying that the next state variables are going to be literally the next state, like the next, the present, the present state in the next clock. So that's the property of the D flip flops, is that the data just goes through, right? Yes, if we make a state diagram for any given circuit, the table must be for D flip flops, yes. No problem, no problem. Thank you for coming, everybody. Thank you for the help in a lot of those questions, right? There's some difficult questions, especially that middle one there. Um, and these notes are being posted. Yes, I will send these to Christine, and she will do something with them. I don't know. She will post them somewhere. I'm not really sure where, but I will post these notes in tutor announcements on the server, and, um, I will, um, upload the video too. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I appreciate that. Have a good night, everybody. I hope it was helpful. And, yeah, if you have any more questions, I'll be here for just a few more minutes if anybody has any more questions, but other than that, this is everything for today.
Yeah, you said you were gonna post them on the server, like a Discord server?
Yeah, like tutor, tutor, yeah, like SY.
Oh, could you post that link in the, in the chat?
Yes, sure, I can. Sure, I can post the link in the chat. Just say. Okay, there we go. So click that. Oh, sorry, I can't. There we go, so go ahead and click that.
All right, thanks.
No problem. Okay. Here we go, yeah. Here we go, yes, no problem for the notes, yes, hope that's helpful, again, you can go. Obviously, you probably know the website, but just go back up here, there's the website. I'll be here for a few more minutes, if any more questions, let me know.
Um, my question is, uh, you know, when, like, like, let's say you say uh something is a modulus three counter, right? Uh, that means it in binary, it's gonna go zero, one, two, and then it's gonna reset, right?
Yep.
Okay, alright.
That's a modulus three counter.
Okay.
Stay for two more minutes, maybe I'll just, I'll stop, I'll stop the recording.